Yeah, YouTube and Zoom.
You can use it.
Well, who knows? Our, our meetings are now online. So we're being YouTube. And joining in part of the waiting. I'd like everyone to join me in welcoming our new member, Ken Cook. Thank you for. And that to our community. This is one on the old business would be followed on ordinance violations.
What would you like to know for Paul?
Uh, how, how it's going? You have any issues or?
No. Fire complaints. Nothing at the new ordinance that was submitted for the business violation. Vote on that tonight, which will deal with repairs with all of these on the streets now is there's a business violation. And are the, were the issue of not lingering since. Way of the seventh. So. Those issues are somewhat resolved. Yeah, there's a. Uh, did you have that?
Uh, he was supposed to move him by there.
Yeah. Uh, one fifty-five Western Street. We had a wee baitment posting. And that was taken care of. Still have an issue with the brush. This there, um, we're gonna. Get that removed.
But. Say, where do one five five? Is that from my house?
One fifty-five. It's one fifty-five mark.
Yeah. My husband would be upset if we have an issue.
So, um, on our remedy, uh, brush issue, those remote. So that's part of that.
Okay. Moving on, uh, situation with our chairman, getting more information or quotes from them?
I do, um, we are gonna have to go with the national seating out of South Bend only because, um, the Freedom Medical out of Port Wayne does not license this algorithm for government buildings, but they don't have the elevator permit.
Okay.
So they would have to have somebody come in when they don't know when they can get it done and.
We don't have time for that.
No. So I did, uh, file for the grant, we have a meeting next week to follow up with them to, to where it's held in, but we should know by August. When the grant is finalized for this round, if we don't get this one, then there's one in November that we can go with as well. There is, um, a hundred and dollar fifty, um, fee for annual inspection. Um, that wasn't on the original quote, I did call and ask. Um, but that's where it stands now is they have all the documentation that everything that they need, and so they would.
Okay, and what was their total?
Um, eighty-five hundred dollars a day, eighty-five days.
And to make all here aware, um, the lift that we're trying to share with that we're talking about is for our basement. Uh, we've had head and cap individuals, um, who need to take shelter periodically and are unable to access our basement. Um, been because we just, we don't have an elevator or a way to get them there. So we're trying to remedy this problem. Have a way to see to their say. On the new business, uh, have their children.
Okay. Not a public speaker, but I'm gonna try to get through this.
You'll do just fine.
Yeah, I'll get through it, it'll be quick, and then I think Donna has some concerns and questions that needs addressed also. So most of you know me, I'm Heather, my husband Mark, and we have a registered community cat colony. Um, we've also worked closely to help the town add community cat section to the updated animal ordinance. Uh, so they're able to be protected and properly cared for. Recently, there have been allegations that certain neighbors were given permission to trap and eliminate three community cats from their colonies. I mean, I got that not everyone likes cats, but morally and legally you can't bait, trap and kill them. Would you do this to your neighbor's dog? The cats in question that now are missing and they're ear tipped, a sign that they're spayed and neutered and part of a colony. The cost, this costs those of us in the community that donate to the fund, a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars each, and this is not the first occurrence. Perhaps we need to briefly talk about the program, I think there's still confusion about feral versus stray. Feral cats are not socialized and they do fear humans. Stray cats are able to be touched by their caregivers, but most will still run from strangers. Part of our job as caregivers is to socialize the cats so they can ideally be rehomed and those that are not candidates can be taken into the vet for annual vaccinations and continue to live their best life controlling the rodent population. As caregivers, we do our best to limit their travel through a neighbor's yard by providing them food, shelter and litter boxes at the minimum. But please keep in mind that per the ordinance, the cats must be able to roam free, we cannot confine or hoard them. They are spayed and neutered, vaccinated and are being cared for by an individual or multiple individuals in some cases. Uh, I understand that some don't like cats or wild animals in their yard. For those people, I might suggest a more humane way to keep them away. Motion activated sprinklers, water hoses, sport guns, just a few suggestions. I certainly don't enjoy my neighbor's dogs that bark all the time and run free on my property at three A M. The deer, rabbits and woodchucks that eat my sunflowers and garden, but we have to do better and find a humane way to deter them and coexist. Or rely on law enforcement to enforce the ordinance as it's written. In closing, a few of us have put a lot of time and money into community cats so that they can live out their best life, serving the purpose of keeping the rodents to a minimum. The community cat program involvement is growing and more people are donating to the spay and neuter fund. Our group is educating others the best we can and the program is working. We are asking for the help and support of our town and law enforcement to keep this alleged killing from being allowed to happen. Thousands of dollars, time, sacrifice, tears and heartbreak are put into this program. We don't just do this because we love cats, we do this because we love our community.
Um, I've lived in Grover City for forty-eight years and I've never had any problems with my neighbors. And these last couple of years has been hell. I've had the neighbor tell me, the only good cat was a dead cat. Um. I get up. In the middle of the night, I go out with a flashlight. Do a head pounce. Because my neighbor is trapping them, removing them. I've asked him, I said, I asked him to his face, are you trapping the cats? And he says, yes. And I said, please do not take the cats that have collars on and their ears are clipped. I said, please don't take them. I said, I don't know what you're doing with them, I said, I'm missing three. And I said, I do have kitty litter boxes outside, I do feed them at the days of day at times. And I said. And there's all spayed and neutered, I'm in the process of getting them. We were understanding with the vet that they were getting their shots. And apparently they weren't, okay? So I've got appointments. You can take two in and get the ready shots. And then we'll go, you know, make another appointment a couple of months later and wrangle up the other ones. So I, it's hard to get a feral cat a collar on him and get him back in a cage and take him back up there.
Yeah.
But I'm doing the best I can. But I just, we did put breakaway collars on, um, all of her cats so that if they get stuck somewhere, they'll come off. But if we see that they're off, we, you know, either find it or we put a new one on. You know, she went bought, went about fifteen collars. So I've got one gray cat, we put a collar on him, I go out there in the evening, it's off of him. I mean, you. You put a cat, you know, collar on a cat for so long and, you know. Well, we keep putting them on. Uh, only if they leave them alone that have the ears. Yeah. Well, when I asked him about.
Believe that they don't have a collar, they have their ear tag.
Yeah, that should be enough.
They can't all have collars, they're not temperament, the temperament won't allow every single.
Oh, I got bruises and scratches.
And that's not safe for you or the cat. They have ear tips as identification.
And when I asked him about trapping the cats, he told me yes, he said he had permission from the police officer that he could do it. And I said.
Did you give permission to trap them?
Yes, so we provide traps, uh, he had his own. So I, I talked with him after, I talked with Donna. Um, I didn't talk to him prior to that, so if it came up, if that was said before in my conversation with Donna, then no. I talked with him after the fact, um, and told him, you can trap the cats if they're on your property, I don't have a problem with that, but you contact me. I gave him a copy of the ordinance, put her name and phone number on there.
Okay.
So he could get a hold of me, I said, if you catch him, you contact me, I will take care of the cat, not you. That was after three had already come up missing, so I, I've not received any phone calls or, um, anything since then, since that conversation.
I'm willing to buy a motion, um, sensor sprinkler for the man. If, you know, if that helps, keep everything in the world out of.
There, there'll be a civil issue between.
I'm just saying that I'd be volunteered to spend seventy dollars to keep animals out of the yard.
And I was talking to my son and my sister and I said, we'd go up to Roking or something, get the snow fencing. The barrier fencing that blocks your snow drifting in your yard and putting up against my backyard. So my backyard isn't free for them to go in. I mean, I don't know what else I can do to keep them out of, I mean, if you're gonna put a.
I don't think that there's anything that you.
If you're gonna put a cage.
Where we're talking about some cats are, and, and I, I know. Your heart is in the right place, uh, but at the same time, you're not gonna be able to control a cat, keep it from one yard or another.
Well, like I told him, they'll just go around your fence.
You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to find them. They're supposed to be allowed to be free running.
Yeah.
People just need to be able to.
And of course, you're gonna put a cage here with canned food in it, they're gonna go over there to eat it.
I don't see canned food in your context. Okay. Beer, meat, no meat.
But, but I can tell you that I personally appreciate feral cats, I saw one going across the parking lot at the library with a fine looking rat. So, yeah, I'm glad it cleverly come to my house because he was gonna have a fun year.
We have less feral cats now because of this program, because they're being socialized.
This year, I had zero, zada, none, babies born.
Right? We have not, we have kittens.
No.
Others have not had kittens. And there's a new, new family across the street from us that has kittens and we've talked to them. And they have taken two of them and so far they know about the fund now and they're gonna utilize them.
And I wanna appreciate, I want to appreciate what you have done.
Thank you.
You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Couldn't do it without you guys, so.
We all have a duty to go for it. And they act like I've got eighteen hundred billion cats back there. And I did have eight, now I'm down to five, so.
What's the name we're having damage to a yard?
What?
What's the name we're having damage?
Yeah, it was his complaint.
He was, they were urinating and feces and then he shot it.
So I'm sure you wouldn't mind go picking it up if you can prove that it was your cat?
Well, if I can bend over, yeah, yeah.
Well.
The squirrels do it, the raccoons, the, the woodchucks do it.
Well, I've seen raccoon back there, two raccoons and osos.
I have a raccoon that's been swinging in the swing in my bathroom.
I've seen, I've seen deer, I've even seen a woodchuck run from the yard underneath the shed.
And it doesn't mean it's your cat, like it doesn't mean it's one from your crew, there's cats. From.
And like I try to keep track of them to where, you know, and I know where they're at.
Yes.
All right, thank you ladies. We'll move on to the Wayne Fisher Prime Player, English for free, what can you do?
Sure, um, hi, I'm Wayne Fisher, um, CEO of Inzyme Solutions World, we're in Garrett, Auburn. Uh, we've been in business twenty-five years, to my left is Bob Hawley, he's the chief operating officer of, um, some enzyme solutions. We're a biotech company. Um, and you wouldn't. Expect something like this, uh, in, uh, yeah, outside of, outside of the big city. There's, uh, we, we manufacture our own biotechnology, there's a reason why I'm saying that, it's because of most people who buy the biotechnology and then resell it for different purposes, like wastewater treatment or treatment upon it, it's very expensive. We have a proprietary process. Um, that we manufacture our own, we've had this proprietary process for over twenty-five years and Bob and I have done all the research and how many countries around the world are like us?
There's about ten, ten of the companies like us in the world.
Yeah. And what we do is we manufacture these things, we process hog waste in South Korea, uh, we clean surgical instruments, all of the provinces in China, enzyme detergents, standard clean surgical instruments, uh, we ship to Australia. The reason is because we manufacture and control the, uh, the enzyme technology. And, um, the biochemistry is, is, is very simple. Um, but it's very complex, uh, and takes a long time, long time to explain. But what we're doing is transforming the process of, uh, cleaning, um, reservoirs and lakes and things like that, uh, historically, out here, there's a small, uh, uh, it was seventeen thousand square feet? Yeah. Um, historically, when the heat gets going in the summer, uh, what happens is you get tremendous algae growths. Because what the runoff of all of the nutrients and everything in this segment water in the heat, the first thing you're gonna have is algae. And historically, what you do is you treat it with algaecides, uh, it kills it. Uh, it can be toxic, uh, to every, uh, thing that comes in contact with aquatic life, you said there were goldfish everywhere. And, um, that material falls to the bottom and becomes the muck that is the food source for next to yourself, it's a terrible cycle. And, um, the, uh, the way we've done it and, uh, we've done for the past fifteen years for many small ponds that we started doing it for an oligarch over in Soviet Georgia and things like that, now we're taking it to the bigger lakes. Here's what we're doing, we have a organic process that essentially goes down and, and it'll be the same organic process for the uh, wastewater treatment plant, their first two lagoons. You're taking down the muck, we're destroying the food ser, food source or that, that old stinky muck with all the nutrients and all the food source to the algae. We're gonna take that down, which we have done. Instead of starting the, uh, the food source to the algae. Um, the aquatic toxicity, we, we dose it anywhere between really five and uh, if we're supercharging in the beginning, if we have to really start it, we might do a fifty or a hundred parts per million. And the aquatic toxicity says, we can't get aquatic toxicity at five thousand parts per minute. Okay, it's purely organic, everything in there, if you soup, Bob and I are the only ones that know the process, it's under lock and key. It's kind of like Coke syrup, we didn't want a patent, we exposed, not to be exposed to it. And so it's, it's truly under lock and key with our, with our attorney. And so we have this process, we knew it was, everything about it is organic. And the D N R has issued a written confirmation to us, it is the only product that can be introduced in lakes that does not require a permit, there's no product toxicity. So we've been treating, um, very large lake down in southern Indiana, uh, West Falls. Uh, they usually have to close every July, it was a waste, uh, it was a land runoff, it was, when it was built, fifteen, three years ago. There were six hundred acres and it was gonna be farm runoff and everything, well, now you got houses, now you got cabins, now you got beaches, now you got everything. And they've had closure every July, we treated last year's first, first July, I didn't much close. Okay? And there's no problem with, oh, wait thirty days or wait three days, you know, after we treat them with toxic chemicals and things like that, there's nothing like it. Okay? So what we did was, we, we took, uh, two weeks ago, which a little worried me because, I mean, it was covered.
Oh, yeah, it was a map, thick map.
Uh, of the algae, okay? And I thought, oh boy, late in the season, then we've had the last two weeks of heat, we're nothing worse than that, I don't know, we're getting started late, I want to lean. And what do you see today, two weeks later?
Pretty clear.
Yeah. And, um, this is transforming, there's, uh, we have universities behind most of our, most of our research, whether it's hog waste or whether it's, um, you know, for, uh, cleaning things, um, and what we're doing is taking an organic process and transforming rate cleaner. And, uh, one of the things that Alan Morrison, who's head of the D N R, we went down and met with him and then last week, you know, the Lisa, who's head of the office of budget management, they asked me, says, how can you do this? So, well, and how can you do it for a third of the cost of all these other expensive treatments? Because we own the technology. If somebody else buys the technology and comes in, very expensive. So we did that, so what we're here today though is to talk about wastewater treatment, because we'll be out, um, Wednesday to do, uh, follow-up treatment to make certain with there is continuous treatment.
On the pond.
On the pond.
Okay.
And if you walk out there later, you're gonna see, it's too bad you didn't see it before, but just think of it as just a green mat. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we treated, rehanded all the pictures, uh, before and after and then now two weeks later. Um, so in the wastewater treatment, you know, as, as we've been working, um, you have, you know, five lagoons, okay? And there's three issues. One, it's, how's, how much capacity, how deep is that muck in the first lagoon?
It's gotta be three or four big manatees.
Okay, what happens, yeah, what happens in the, in the lagoons without, uh, constant biological enhancement. You start taking muck in the body, you start losing capacity, what you might, what you might have is designed as one point seven gallon, uh, gallon, three point one.
Five, five point gallons was designed for those first two lagoons.
Yeah, five point one. And what happens is. The muck just starts and that creates problems downstream, that I'll explain, there's three issues to deal with. We introduce the same, the same biological agents in there and what we'll do is, is again, um, turbocharge the destruction of that muck. And what we'll probably do is a, um, because we're buying the curve, how many years, nineteen seventy-nine they finished it? The final or something, yeah, seventy something, final, I don't know.
Seventy-four is when it was, seventy-four was when it was installed.
Right.
And the last time we cleaned pond was nineteen ninety-three.
Okay, that's true, probably thirty-two years. So what I'll do is, is, uh, little charge, so it's kind of, kind of big deal. And then gradually treat it, okay? Then you've got at the, um, third pond, um, then it moves over and then you've got a phosphorus issue right now, you're treating, uh, you know, fur, fluoride, which is very toxic. And it also, um, it will kill the biological activity that you need in those, in those areas and that will help with the phosphorus. Uh, but again, um, you know, it's, it's not the best solution. And what we've seen is your phosphorus is really low, so you're overusing your, over, uh, they're putting, they're recommending putting a little bit too much. What we would use is a, is a polymer, um, that doesn't disrupt the biological activity, that still takes the phosphorus down, okay? And then, uh, the fourth bid, why don't you explain the fourth bid, Bob?
So the other, the other issue is that you guys are not able to, um, to discharge during the winter months. And so that leads to your, your capacity issues, you know, as well, because if you could discharge through the, through the winter months, you could draw those, those ponds down, um, so that when the spring comes and your lake folks come back, uh, you have more access or more capacity there that, that handle the waste stream. Um, and so what we would recommend and the reason why you can't is because of ammonia. And, uh, so we would add some nitrifiers to pond four and five. Um, and we would, we would test for that and, and, uh, find the appropriate dose because they're, they're, they are expensive. Those nitrifiers are costly, uh, but they're very effective at bringing down that ammonia, uh, so that you can then discharge twelve months of the year and, uh, get the most, uh, usage out of your system. Uh, so we, we really feel like we can, we can do some good here for the community to give you the, a system that's working, free flowing. Um, and, you know, ultimately will last for you, uh, in spite of growth and, and to give you that capability for growth.
Yeah, you're taking in, you were taking in, you know, in October, uh, you know, over a million gallons and the ethyl was going out of the van. And then you take a look at January, you had a million and a half, just shy of a million and a half gallons coming in. And you couldn't discharge anything because of the ammonia levels and we can take care of it, it's not a, it's not a complex process. What we'd like to do is just at our cost, we're gonna get a little sample of each lagoon, analyze it and say, okay, what, what are the dosage requirements? We already know for the first and second lagoon what that needs to be done because it's, it's, it's purely a capacity issue, you know, okay? How much water is in there and then we would, we would dose the biologicals, for the others, we don't want to over, overdose. So we would do that, take us about a week to analyze and then we'd have a report back to you, the latest on Monday, the twenty-seventh, but probably the twenty-fifth. Um, and then report to you and say, hey, look, here's, here's what we will, here's what we will do to gain the access you're losing, you know, before. You know, and you really lose five, maybe you'll lose six when the first two lagoons, that's, that's an easy piece, the other ones, uh, wanna be a little bit more, um, uh, I already know after, I already know the P P M, we already know what the, what the charge, but the phosphorus and then the, uh, uh, the other levels, we wanna take like that, you know, come back to you and say, okay, here's where you are, here's how, here's how we treat. And it's not emerging because it's not waiting yet, but we can. And it's not emerging because it's not winter yet, but we can prepare you for the winter and say, hey, look, uh here's what you got now in the your order, if you don't come along. So if any any questions from anybody who worked at that, do a full report and let me know.
Um and plus, buddy?
Of course.
And we'll we'll line we'll line height mid. Uh because again, we don't need to, we don't need to treat the nitrifiers until that ammonia level starts to creep up. And so that that we can keep a moment uh until we see that 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 might where that ammonia starts to get yeah, yeah, because your system is working. It is working. Um I wanna make that clear. It's not broken. Um but you know, if if you continue, you're gonna continue to reduce capacity. We wanna try and help you gain that capacity back.
And now you're gonna buy it.
Well, one of our issues was lack of maintenance. Uh we've had many years where there was, it wasn't broken, so don't fix it kind of a thing going on.
Well, it's a very large system for sound this side of Europe, so that
That was play over.
Yeah, so you have your passive.
Yeah, uh that was never our issue. They like
That's what I'm saying.
Sludge is an issue, you know, those kind of things.
And dredging is very expensive. You have to come in and
They look for that.
It's gonna be very expensive. We we've already Or you can do that by logic uh without draining that down and and dredging that uh muck out.
Yeah, uh the other problem with dredging is um having it hauled off.
Yes.
Um we originally were going to have farmers to take it, but because people have decided to use wetlands, the farmers do not want it, wanna have it because it's not biodegradable. And so that
Well, it is, but it takes eighty to a hundred years.
Yeah, yeah, you know, kind of thing.
Oh, but you want the other.
So we have to pay several thousands of thousands of dollars to have it hauled off to a a site that will take.
You're the this is the we'll we'll create that.
We're not gonna do anything through the web.
No. Yeah.
So that that so we'll bring it up. We'll do the analysis, share the analysis, show you where, we know where where you are looking at for the phosphorus and what what needs to be done.
That date, the twenty-third and twenty-seventh, is that for July or August?
Oh, July. Yeah, I'm sorry, did the twenty-fourth because the twenty-seventh, Monday, so it needed to be Friday or Monday.
We'll just we'll get that information back from the MCH and send it back to you back to your company.
Twenty-third, twenty, excuse me, the twenty-fifth is Friday and twenty-eighth.
I just recorded the timeline we were working.
Yeah.
By the end of the, by the end of this month. There. Two questions.
Yeah?
What does the muck turn into or what happens to it?
Well.
Um is this a, is this not a cost fix or is this something where you can do this on data basis?
Well, what we what we don't wanna do is um, you know, you're kind of uh what we what we would do is um treat it and then have and then back it off or give kind of a supercharge. Not that expensive, not like going to ten thousand parts per million, we're talking about, you know, maybe a hundred parts per million and backing it off, twenty parts per million. And we trust you. And we wanna do that in order to in order to sort it down. And uh you know, it takes time. It's digestive. Biologically, you know, uh what happens is, you know, bacteria is out there. They'll emit the enzymes. The enzymes will break down, like the enzymes in your body, will break down the food that you ingested so that you can absorb it, okay? And that's what that's what happens in the biological activity. We turbocharge that into and so it's consumed.
So it doesn't it doesn't fall down and have to be a something or a thing, or no? No, but it basically goes out.
Yeah, yeah. And then uh you ought to see what we do. Well, may not see it for the hog waste. Because he go in the hog barn, you know, you ever been in a hog barn? And I spent two years every weekend in a hog barn doing this around here and then Bob and I were in Korea and China now interested. And you know, they they might have two feet of of sludge in the bottom, okay? We use our stuff and the next time they pump out, they gotta put a sludge. Also, they got capacity, no more foaming at the top and also they got what we call black liquid gold, as they call it. And then they can spray the water in the fields. Now that is pure work. Peaches, nobody saw wetlands now. So, yeah, it's consumed biologically too. This is uh I run by a company, you've been with Bob for over twenty years and um this most exciting thing because it's truly an eco-solution uh to what we're doing and we have, we have so much, so much proof on. And it's it's one of those things, we are returning lakes to its ecological genesis. And I will say this, the analysis. Governor Braun called me Thursday night, one after our meeting with the OMB. He is, this is exciting. Because we're not gonna use toxic chemistry uh to treat the lake and you know, we have so much runoff from the farms. You know, that uh the amount of nitrogen, NPK, they call it, you know, so much nitrogen, phosphorus and and acid that, you know, lakes just bloom and bloom and bloom. You had another uh source of your organ, of your own craft.
Yeah. Craft spirits was really, actually it was the marshmallow department that was causing the real problem.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so what they have is, yeah, you get cellulose in there. And then when we take care of that. So now that they have a treatment plan, the next one will be treating silver lake, but uh so that's what that answers your question, first question.
Yes.
And then we're not, we're talking about uh, you know, kind of a plan through next December, just so that it's, you know, monthly maintenance, it's not, you know, we're not talking about um huge costs, okay, for this. And I could say, hey, do the pay us upfront. No, we're just talking about making certain and we monitor it. We'll be monitoring every two weeks and you know, he knows, so um this guy here knows everything there is to know back there. Including falling, you know, just left lagging in the muck and luckily getting caught by a rock.
Yeah.
Um so that's what that's what it is. And then returning the uh lagoons to their capacity, increasing the phosphorus, um then making certainly the treatment for ammonia is such that um even discharging, you're not having the capacity, you should get a real cold weather, almost in a month, a month after a month. Like, might not be the one to destroy. Does that answer your question?
I have a question as well.
Sure.
Um I'm Matt O'Shelly with Commonwealth Engineers, the towns engineering consultant. Um what other locations have you used this product in a wastewater lagoon system and what were the results? Is there a list of references you could provide to the towns?
Yeah, uh you know, one of the places that we've been uh doing, you know, red gold tomatoes?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll we'll give you a rundown, you know, to when when you want, when we get back, when we get back together on how many in the pulp and paper industry, that's the next industry that that we're going into. Um but yeah, the biologics are um we'll we'll have plenty to discuss on that.
So you have I D M approval to use this?
We wanna talk with, we do wanna talk with I D M and make certain that, you know, no agency is um suppressed.
Okay. It's my understanding that I D M is not favorable towards chemicals being added to lagoons, so that's something that
Which is which is why we're going the biological route as opposed to a chemical route.
We wouldn't add one bit of chemical. Uh we just, we just wouldn't. This is totally a totally biological. And um yeah, we can uh whether it's Alan or, as you know, um Amanda
Yeah.
down there at the DNR and then um Maddie and then Chris, they know all, they know all about this at the DNR. And then um uh we'll make certain that, you know, because we're so proud of it, we can't wait to, you know, for more people to know about. You walk into a room, because it's part of it is, it's kinda like you have wonderful skepticism. I'm 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 not being facetious about that. He was saying, what? You mean that not a quality answer to some of the biggest problems we had in lakes? Yeah. This is, I run five companies. This is the most exciting thing because Bob loved to kick me out. We're on the company, Gary, telling me to retire all the time. I ain't retiring for not until I get this world wide. Seriously. Um so quicker we can and she's old too now, but she's, you know.
No, it's always not one day.
Well, we we pay, we pay.
No. Cheryl is retired.
She's with the D N, she's with the DNR. So we asked if she would join us. Anyway, does that answer everybody's? The lake treatment? Uh probably fifty. Yeah. And then, well, most of it has been for ponds and lakes in the five to fifty acre. Um you know, and then uh then you're uh called us and then this is uh several years ago. And um and then um all of a sudden, there's and now we have, now we've been, this is all right, we'll treat them. We'll make that, we'll make that right. Um it's a, I've got, I'll I'll, I will send you an article that explains you know, non, for being non-scientific, kind of there's some uh scientists. I'll break through their citizens and but then, so yes, several several years. You know, just like the the hog waste, several years of Cleveland, the university back and some of the things that we're working with is my independence thing, I definitely send grace power. And they will come over to our plants if we wanna be involved.
Are there any other questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, sorry I took so much time, but whatever, whatever information with the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Commonwealth.
We have a couple of things for you to sign. So first item is the final quantities adjusted change order for the bike trail project. So retaining the total loss down for once.
Yay. A specific place for?
Uh the second page. Adjusting the total contract price to match with what those final quantities were. Since there was a little bit that wasn't used, then that money just goes back to you, right? Probably gonna need a motion from the board to approve this.
I want her to.
What's the name of the suit? Uh change order number two. And then once that is approved, I have the contract lease final fee request. She released her routine and done the project and now the big final documentation and ask some of the audience to come over there and use it as well.
The rest of the rules. Make a motion to approve.
All right, favor?
Hi.
And just an update on the project. Uh we got people to spend five contingency funds on a list of different material amenities, so purchased and and that'll be finally done for the project.
And for everyone in the audience, um we were able to have some money refunded on the trail project and will be able to use that money to buy things like benches and bicycle racks and other amenities. Um you know, stands for people for their doggy bags and those kind of things to cut along the trail for you.
That's all I have. Uh Shelley Williams, Convention and Primary Auctions. Yeah, I'll use that real quick. But a lot of that management group, I know.
Are you gonna hurt my brain?
No.
Okay.
I do have a couple. I'm sure if anybody wants to be interested in what we're talking about, which is um primaries to um um actually conventions to there you have one. There we go. We will up here for the Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm Shelley Williams, Republican Chairwoman for Noble County. And um back there is actually a vice chairman of Noble County, Jim Hager. We're looking to move, there's just a handful of counties in the state of Indiana that actually have um conventions still, small town conventions, meaning if you have under three thousand, five hundred spoke registered voters, you are allowed to have a convention rather than a primary. And if you look on that sheet, there's every election cycle, there's like a rhythm to the cycle. We have a prime, we have a midterm, we have a presidential on even number years, and then on the odd, one of the odd number years, we have a municipal. And what we do, or or a town convention, so what Rome City does, it's the only one in Noble County, I think it's essentially like only three or four in the whole third congressional district, we don't, that's still new town conventions. Um I know Secretary of State Gabriel Morales is trying to um move from town conventions to all primaries and actually move from the odd number years to uh an even number years to save even more money because elections are so expensive. It costs central mobile, for example, to do that referendum in central mobile, cost over, that was just one little uh area, it was seven thousand dollars. So to save that kind of money, they're trying to move all the municipals to the general election year or the midterms on even number years or presidential years. So we're here to just say that right now. I know we walked through, um Wocup really used to have town conventions and I think we walked through that process with them in two thousand nineteen and now they go for primaries. Um I'd really love to move Rome City to a primary issue of um convention or some of the conventions, move it to a primary election as well. There's so many reasons why um I think if you look back at history, they say that the conventions were to save towns money. And if you think back to the western days, all you had to do was pack a notice to your town hall door. Everyone would show up in three days and you'd have an election. Today, still today, the minimum requirement for notification is a notification tag at the town hall door. And that's all we have to to say, hey, we're having a convention. It doesn't really seem very fair that a lot of people would miss that opportunity if they didn't come by here and check every three days to see uh if there would be convention or not. So what we would want to do is just make it part of the primary election on even number years. So one of the things I talked with Lanianna about was she's really concerned about the muck and especially with Yeah, that is, it is. So I've been reaching out to Secretary of State Gabriel Morales a lot and trying to figure out how we can make this happen for Rome City. And one of the things that we can do is move on our own and you'd be one of the only ones here to move your municipal elections to an even number year without the rest of the state following soon. And that's funny. There's provisions of those, you have a code and I've missed a look, I put that code in that packet for you so you can see um the opportunity to move municipal election from an even number or from a odd number year to an even number year. Because if you move it to an even number year, you always already participate in a primary election on those even number years, presidential one and and a um midterm. You already participate, run down the fire station and you all, you all vote down there, right? So it's already been established, the county already does it, county's expense. So you would say, you would have zero cost to you if you did that. It was just a matter of wording it the right way and trying to sync it up. Because right now you guys are on four-year terms
Yeah.
on odd number years. So what you can do, and again, we're gonna have to get with Mr. Glick and try to figure out how we would work that. Um say in twenty twenty-seven, for example, um all of you might be elected for one year and then you have to be elected again in twenty twenty-eight or the general election. That would work. Or you could do it earlier than that, you say about three year and do it in twenty thirty. So um that is an option for you all to get this change synced up onto the even number. So, um, that is an option for you all to get this change synced up onto the even number of years. And I'm happy to answer any of those questions for you, Mr. Gluck. I can set you up and put it all the contacts in your packet. For our, um, Indiana Election Division down in Indianapolis, we have, if you notice, there's a co-council, Brad King is actually the co-council. And the reason he's co-council is because he's the Republican co-council, which, you guys are all Republicans, I would assume we need to reach out to the Republican co-council. Um, the other council, the opposite, Democratic council, and they give different advice than the Republicans. So you want to make sure you ask for Brad King or Valerie Rochelle, that I can put in your thing, because that's your, your person that you're going to get advice from. Um, and then I also put in, um, the direct election, the election director from Secretary Drive, Dana Roxas, contact in there, in there. Can't get anywhere, you really want some clarification, you should go and sort it into. So what I would love for you to do is to agree, have a motion to be forward with this, or at least have a motion for Mr. Gluck to look into it. And again, it should be zero if you do it that way. If you want to just simply move it, keep it on that year, keep it on the odd number of years, which is fine. And just incur that cost yourself in two thousand twenty-one, I believe, or twenty-two, they actually, municipals now absorb a hundred percent of the cost. So like Kendaville, right now, they have to do a hundred percent of it. So if you want to do that, I would expect to maybe go four, five thousand dollar. Um, cost to that, but I would make sure you narrow that down with the county clerk to see what that is. There's a formula that she goes by, and she will have a lot of form, and what that formula is, you're well aware of the cost prior to that, of a capital. So again, we'll go ahead and figure that out and how you want to work it, if you want to have. Um, go ahead, look to twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-seven, I guess it would be, or sync it up to twenty twenty-eight.
So if we went to, um, with the twenty-seven, or twenty-four, twenty-three, sorry, twenty twenty-seven, um, and we would. Hold office for an additional year and then be primary.
In twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
Right, now you could choose in twenty twenty-seven instead of town convention to do your own primary or municipals without the rest of the county. But you can incur that. Or we could do one more convention, and I, now, again, the only thing we really have to mention is if there's more than one candidate, and if you don't have more than one candidate for each position, then there's no need to have it. We have a town convention in Rome City, so. So there's only been one person performing their job, which, so I think with, um, the more people are more involved and more that run, I think.
Absolutely.
Convention, and that convention thing, I would tell me what. Um, the primaries, the Democrat rules for convention, the Republican rules for convention, they're actually different. Um, so this would be a way, so everyone's on the same rule, we can rule that. So, and again, it opens up interpretation, and there's just a mess, last minute, I did, person, they did a little, yeah, the two or three challenges, but should have been, because it was just a mess. Of people not being able to come on the boat, who was on voter rolls, who blessed them, it was just, you really just don't want to put your town and, or the voters in the next. Yes.
Well, I think one of the reasons why they separate out municipals from presidential is because there's always an issue with who's allowed to vote. So if you go to a presidential primary, then you've got the entire county coming in and voting, plus you've got those that are only allowed to vote for the town people. The last time we did, the last time we had an election, and we didn't have the presidential thing in there, we had other people coming in to vote. That weren't allowed to vote, and then there were people that were supposed to vote, but the county wasn't allowing them to vote. Because their address was Kendaville.
Right, right.
Well, we have people that live in Rome City that have a Kendaville address.
Well, they have to vote where they're, where they're registered to vote.
Right, but the county, the county wouldn't let them vote where they're registered because they had a Kendaville address. My issue was with the county clerk.
Right.
And not knowing who's on voter roll, and that's still probably going to be an issue unless they've changed how we're doing it. If we switch to a presidential, because that, then we're going to have three times as many people trying to vote that aren't in the town, city limits. That the, the people that are, they're telling you whether you can vote or not vote, have to go through the rules to look, jam it up.
This happens in every city. Kendaville's had to turn away people a little bit, you know.
I know, but what I'm saying is it's going to jam up the presidential election if you move this to that.
No, I think it'll open it up.
Then the court stocks has got to be better at what they're supposed to do, and they want us to move to the presidential.
How it typically works is there's about, there's not, there's not one ballot, or, or there's actually twenty-nine ballots to choose from. If you're, I look at it, twenty-nine ballots to choose from if you're, if you're Democrat. And so when you come in, and actually, some of them, even there's one precinct in Kendaville, it used to be split, so there was like thirty, a couple of them are split. We didn't want them to like stick out, so there's like six, thirty, forty different ballots you can choose from in the state, or in the county. So they do pretty well now, they have it down to a system, they're using a little bit of A I to actually generate their ballots based upon the voter rolls where you are. Because you may live right outside the town, but they're within the town limits, and so your ballot stays something different than their ballot. So that only gives their own distinct ballot of any, depending on where they live, what precinct they're in, that they're in town limits or out of town limits. And it actually said that, if you go back into the voter, there is a public testing time, and you can actually go and watch these voter machines be programmed, and if you look at it, it actually says. Rome City in town, Rome City out of town, Rome City precinct something in town, Rome City precinct something out of town. I mean, there's all those choices, and you will get that person on the ballot. So yeah, but they have to turn away a person or two, you know, this is the so, it's in town, but not a power election. We do that all around town every other year. And I even get calls on, on like that no election year on twenty twenty-five, let's get, I probably got twenty calls, why aren't we having a primary this year? And that, yeah, I just don't know the rhythm of, of the, of the election, so hopefully we'll change that, we'll have any notification. I'm sorry, yeah, if you have any questions, I'm here to help you guys walk through it. Um, I have Dan Lash, who's our election board member, he's probably going to help you guys walk through that as well. Um, the whole election board is really on board with it, to help you guys, any way we can. Anybody have any questions to her?
Oh, I would just like to think what kind of, one of the reasons why this came up is because the, uh, convention approach seems to be something that people should know is secret. Right, and not traditional. And so if you do this, uh, bringing to the normal, the normal election process that everybody that just moved a primary, right, as opposed to this convention, just. It's, it's, it's a mystery to some of your residents, because there was some, um, discussion about.
For what would happen if we moved to the presidential primary? What would happen in this case from Kendaville's, that would be a decision.
At least, this caucus, the caucuses are totally different, that caucus was just an emergency for a vacancy that happened.
Right, well, we've had that, if we moved.
Well, he's, he's, he's your town council person, and so that term is, um, so he would just be, you can't shorten it. Like, you can't shorten Cheryl, she was elected for four years, we can't shorten Cheryl. And you're just going in until that, that next cycle starts. So he's just going in until December twenty-seventh, or twenty, December thirty-first.
Right, we just mentioned.
So then he would be on a ballot between you.
Right.
And then anybody else would be on that ballot too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's also put their name in and run.
Anybody else can run, they'll save their name in.
And they can go to the convention also.
They can also do that in convention.
Yeah, you know when they convention, then you can put your name in and run to that position.
That's right, in January of twenty twenty-seven.
Not adding my question.
What you're asking is if it was Republican or a seat, I resign, you guys would have liked somebody to sit in my position until.
If we move, like, you're wanting us to move away from moving back then on the odd number of years to voting during the presidential primary on the even number of years, right? And I know that there was a lot of so, so to speak, around him, um. Around him, he moved into fifty, right? And that's what brought all of this up, this all Facebook.
Actually, we've been working on this for years.
So if we move, if we move to the presidential primary, and he may take to see your chair on your case for seats. What would be the difference in that situation, I mean, of that?
I think they're confused between caucus, caucus and convention. A caucus is what they use to, for me, to replace Ben Castle.
Okay.
Because he went to be, went to, went to Alvin, and so I took his place on the council.
And somebody leaves midterm.
Right, and that formation they moved.
There was, there was myself and two other candidates that went through the caucus. And, um, there were also other members for the Kendaville Town Board going through all at the same time I did. And they went through the same caucus that I did. And it was three members who chose.
Were chosen by?
I was chosen by the Republican Party.
No, they were chosen by the voters.
They, yes.
But there's three, there are twenty-nine precincts in Noble County and twenty-nine Republicans precincts. You pick, you were Republican, you were former Republican, you tried, right? You picked those twenty-nine people. She picked one in hers, she picked one in hers, so everyone in there, twenty-nine precincts, they're all in person. And they're just.
To represent the caucus.
To represent at the caucus, just in case of those merchants, that's all they do, they're not paid, they might get called once in four years, might get called three times in four years, you just never know, they're very rare. Democrats too, that twenty-nine people, so that's just a rare instance where the person you picked to pick on your behalf, and so he can be elected next time, or whoever. That's just the feeling, that person voted on your behalf, he's voted.
Yeah, and so now, so for us, when the next election comes up, there could be five people who would like me to have my seat, they can be put all down.
And a convention or a primary, they're both the same way, the same paperwork, same thing, it's just how we're going to conduct it.
When the convention is one big, primaries, you get early voting, all the way to the very.
And there's standard value, we're one of the safest, we're like, you know, as a nation, state of Indiana, as well as state, state was, why not use the rules that are established, you know? Counties running it pretty well, I think they've got, we've got to make sure.
Is that answering a question?
Yeah.
I would like to make a question, we're all trying to look into it, make sure.
Thank you very much. Uh, move on to an address approval for Green Benz.
Okay, yeah, caution.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. We're one short tonight, so we're a little off, okay? Address approval for Green Benz on State Road Nine, Nathan and Rachel Skinner, one, 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 zero, two, five, North State Road Nine, Rome City, Indiana, four, six, seven, eight, four.
Yeah, this was brought to my attention that it wasn't an address, whether or not there would be a problem. It's actually an E nine one one address, only, obviously, everybody lives there, like, mission approved, it was what she put there. Uh, that should be your election.
Like a motion for approval.
Second, I'm in favor.
All right.
All right. Ordinance, two, zero, two, five, two, amending title. Nine, chapter, nine, three point zero, one, G. Oh, you want me to?
Uh, this is your addendum to the nuisance ordinance, uh, for the pair of vehicles on the streets or alleyways.
So the title is, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh two, and ordinance amending title. It's at nine, chapter ninety-three point oh one G in our, um, code of ordinances. Whereas the Traffic Safety Committee has been approached by a request prohibit the maintenance and repair of motor vehicles on town streets and alleys. Whereas Traffic Safety Committee recommends to the Town Board that an ordinance prohibiting the maintenance and repair of motor vehicles on the town streets and alleys to benefit public safety. And approve the flow of traffic for which said streets and alleys are intended, but it is also a public nuisance. Therefore, be it ordained that Title Nine, Chapter ninety-three point oh one G is amended to prohibit the maintenance and repair of motor vehicles on all. Town of Rome City streets and alleys, be it further ordained that the first violation will result in owner of motor vehicle being issued a warning and given four hours to remove the violation. Be it further ordained that any subsequent violations by said owner unlawfully performing maintenance or repairing a motor vehicle shall be deemed to commit a plus A in fraction. Penalty, Chapter ninety-three point ninety-nine, is punishable by a fine of twenty-five dollars and worth of three hundred dollars. And each day that any violation shall continue shall be a separate offense, if not otherwise a discreet act and violation by this division. A is for a penal violation of the ordinance per se, and that any violator shall be cited, prosecuted therefore and liable to the penalty. Notwithstanding any additional action or enforcement of plus incurred percentage to ninety-three point oh two. Further shall pay all costs of prosecution and removal of not complying motor vehicle next with such violation. This ordinance shall take effect upon promulgation according to law, approved this fourteenth day of July, twenty twenty-five.
I'm in favor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Because it's my speed. Director Mary, Minor, L L B, Byam Law. H back plan maintenance.
Yes, so we got a new, um, contact for annual contract maintenance that we have done with them the last several years. And it's about thirteen dollars cheaper than it was last, we're actually very able to maintain that every day, so, and what is our cost this year? Um, two thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars.
I'll tell you that.
I'm sorry, this is.
Is this the same standard agreement that we have before?
It is. It's just thirteen dollars less this year than it was last year.
There's a lot of them.
And we answer.
I'm in favor. So we're great study?
Yes, so I've been in contact with the Indiana Rural Community Assistance Program, and they actually, for smaller communities, do, um. Rate studies at their heart. And I know that we've been discussing that with the, everything that's been going on with the sewer and, and what we can do, and this is something that we, um, we can do that's not going to be cost prohibitive to us. But may give us a better outlook as to where we want to, what we want to do to for next year. And looking at them, and looking at that, I, I've been playing in contact with this gentleman, I know that, um, so we haven't set up a, an appointment or anything, I just, the branch has, which means looking at that. And once I can get enough, wait, or something, I could have to.
Yeah, well, my, my issue was that we don't have any numbers to work with at this point.
We have the old numbers, but we use those.
I don't think that those will be, um, appropriate, if we're thinking about investing millions.
Well, so one of the reasons why Lynn was here tonight is that we, there may not be a reason to redo the entire plant. But we still need to do the screen of the intake.
Yeah.
So we can stop the wipes from getting into the plant, and then upgrade the rest of our stations and do the main lift. So that may be. So that may be what we talked to Natalie about moving forward with.
And the. And any, any building upgrades?
For the plant, I don't think we need rebuilding upgrades, plus we're putting on the end, but we're not. So like, hopefully, we won't need to do that if.
Need us for some and everything is okay in the building. Will you have any numbers to work with?
Well, we have that, and we have Mashen Robert, that we might need to update those.
Yeah, I can take a look and see when I last updated them, I think it was within the last few months. Um, but I can make sure that's up to date and get it to you.
Uh, because for loans that we want to pack a hundred thousand, uh, and so on and so forth. Um, and how much we would have to increase the rate to cover the cost of those loans. And since, um, the governor. We're definitely gonna have to have some help.
So this is the third pardon, pardon?
Yes. What was the percentage for the thirty, forty percent of budget this preparation?
Well, by thirty, twenty thirty. If, if we don't get any. Really.
Yeah.
Hopefully, though. We get some, it's what he told me about that. They were still working. Yes, we are. In, Indiana rural, what'd you say, uh, rural?
Assistance program, so.
So Indiana rural alliance, Indiana.
Wait, there's, there's another, another app we call Governance Services. Um, that also helps with the pandemic and other issues. Uh, they. There's different areas out there that help small towns, but.
Right, and the, the group that we're talking about getting loan through, that's a government, quasi-government entity that gives loans out, right?
Yeah, it's specifically for municipal loans.
So they're cycled, what, November and then you s- spring?
So they are every three months, you can submit an application.
It's gonna tell us that we're turning up to.
To cover what?
Cover costs. And then if we go forward with a loan to, to other issues, then.
To give us an idea of what we have to, um. Raise on our sewer. To pass on to the customers, so. Are you seeing? Do you need a motion to, to do this, or?
Not as well.
A second, on the favor.
All right.
Fine. We're going to depart every course, town manager.
Do you want me to read the whole thing, or just read parts with it?
You do your view.
Highlights, okay, I had that. Nine meetings for the month, we had eight building permits, one with a barn minimum in town. Demo, and then they replaced their shed, demo the shed, they replaced it. One deck, one shed, um, one house and garage demoed on Hilltop. Um, a new trailer at Grease Landing, one electrical, and then the library, if you haven't noticed, is in the process of an addition. And a remodel, we're also doing that in Kindaville. So that permit was issued. Uh, blank commission, we had a vacate and a replat, um, it's two lot subdivision on the corner of Grant and Harriman. B T A, we had, um. Approval of a fence in the front yard on North Shore, approved a shed for helping hands in the old fire station building, they were. Running out of room and muted space, so they wanted to move their tractors out. Put their long stuff. And that, that was true, approved lot coverage for, um, Lakeside Drive. The owner wanted to install concrete drive, so there was a lot of coverage amount. Um, he also installed drainage to catch the road water and any runoff of his property and his neighbors. That was the one for us. Um, update on, uh, Mr. Swainy on North Shore, he's the individual who. Um, asked for the variance and then built his house in the wrong spot, he's a violation of the variance. This has been going on since January, um, I made a determination. Two months ago, that he needed to comply with variance. And after that, he put his house up for sale. I then checked the listing, um, found that. Nowhere in the listing does it say that if you purchase it, you can't get occupancy, because right now we have stopped and had occupancy to the house. Until this issue is taken care of. So I sent a certified letter to Mr. Swainy. His attorney and the realtor letting them know that no occupancy was given to the house if he sold it. In the listing, he also stated that he had a. Full bathroom and a half bath in the garage, he now is in. Violation of the variance that we granted in twenty twenty two, where we only allowed him to have a. Half bath in the garage, now he has a full bath and a half bath. So, but I also told him that the chimney that he had requested a variance on would have to be removed because. They can't give him another variance when he's in violation of now two variances. So I told him he could. Work on removing the chimney within the stop work, cause I have a stop on the house. So he could remove the chimney, as long as he let us know he was doing it, so that we know he's not doing other work to the house. And that he could also do the removal of bathroom, and once the bathroom is removed, he would let us know. That building inspector were going and check to make sure that it could not be reinstalled. I've not heard anything from anyone on that, since I sent that out.
Um, and that you come for a variance, did he go back?
No, no, but we can't give him another variance because he's already in violation.
Okay.
So until the first ones. Taken care of.
He takes care of the chimney, can he come back for the other?
No, he'd have to take care of the house.
Okay.
So, yeah, he, it's a mess. So I personally, and I don't know if Dustin agrees with me, but. I would like to move forward on getting this resolved, this has been going on since January, um. I don't know, Dustin, what your thoughts are on that, but.
I mean, we filed, well, I guess start finding him for being a violation. The ability to do so, move forward with turning those findings into. Eventually see just injunctively divorce, but, but, but he's not trying to sell it, so he's trying to pass the problem on to someone else. Hopefully, a suspect environment, not an unsuspecting environment. The one point to another, I don't think I'll get them to lawsuit. Hard to tell. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
My thought is we just filed suit on him, to comply.
Yeah, violation, I think we should start finding if there are any violations.
So he asked for a six foot variance on side yards, we required ten, we granted him six. Um, then he put in the. He's building the chimney, the neighbor notified me that the chimney was within the six foot, that we didn't. Chimney can't be within the six foot, so I had to do an actual fact variance on that. The neighbor then had his property surveyed and found that the house's. One corner's four point eight, the other corner's five point two. And then in that variance hearing, we heard that. It was Mr. Swainy that pulled the tape, he didn't have a. Surveyor, and he doesn't have a contractor, he's actually not a contractor, so he doesn't have any. Insurance or liability to go back on, because he did it himself. So.
He did his own survey, even his survey showed that he. It's further than the neighbor's survey, but it's still the six feet, so. Even in his own survey.
So.
So he did a survey.
Okay.
And do all that stuff.
Yes, normal. Especially when you're dealing with inches.
Yeah.
Um, so your suggestion is to start with fine, and then see where that goes.
I don't recall reviewing our finding session, we don't know what.
There are points.
Then there's probably a max, it maxes out at a certain amount. And then we move towards, you know, that max and five suit, where it's pending all the other stuff. There should be a per day violation, so.
Yes.
Cause if we have the, the fines, and we file suit. To enforce the fine, make them judge, and it's probably, then there's no evidence. And then, once you get through that process, then you can ask the court for. Either to force him to do it, or we get there down, well, you can too. And then add that on.
But yes, and, and this isn't, this isn't the first time we've had this happen, and the person had to tear down. And the, the wall. He would be too close, he's, he's ten on the one side and six on the other. So we can't shift it. I don't know, you and Bill always talk about that, but I've never written anywhere. I've never seen that, that code, I know that unwritten, we're all Indiana, well.
I don't know if it's staff's work, or it's, I know a great job. But yeah, that's, that's on where we sit. I, I did talk to his attorney this morning on other matter. Um, but she said she didn't get the letter, cause I, I would have showed up, you know, her, her letter already coming, which she got a realtor's. Apparently, so if they don't disclose it to a potential buyer.
Right, and that was my fear, that it wouldn't be disclosed, and then I. Calling me. I always get calls.
He gets it by them for, for services.
And I have a look to see if it's still listed. Is it still listed? And I'm sure they didn't change the listing and say that you can occupy this house, but you can buy. You can buy it and look at it.
I don't think the realtor.
Well, I would have thought he would have taken the listing down, cause he did get the, he did get it, cause it was signed, present and certified.
Yeah, well, as long as they disclose it.
I'm not saying there's a person on the planet that will buy a house just to look at it, but, okay.
Just the chimney?
No, it's the whole house.
Oh, so it's side of the house?
Seventy foot.
Oh, Jesus.
They want one point one million for it.
Moving on to the other issue, we have Mr. Weisenberger and his chin trees. So he's got a new attorney, and I sent the documents that she asked for. And now Dustin sent me a whole nother list of more documents that she wants.
Well, they claim they don't have the original record that sent first.
Well, okay, but they didn't even look at the documents that I sent them, because in that list, said they wanted a list of. The board members and their appointments certified. And that was all sent in that last thing, so it's like they're just rescinding the same thing that they've already sent, with a different date on it. I mean, tell her, read actually what sent.
Well, and I think for, I guess judicial economy, I think, you know, single records is.
Well, I'm not rescinding it all in one packet.
There's like a little certification.
Yeah, I did, I certified however many pages were in that, and then I'll do another one, and I'll certify the other pages. You don't really want it, you know how many pages it is? It took me a half an hour to send it the last time, that's how much there is.
It, it's not necessarily new attorneys, new for same attorney, but she went out on call to the case.
Yeah, for some reason, I don't know, all right, well, in my spare time, I'll look at that then. Um, but those are the main important things, so just let you read the rest of it.
We'll move on to Weisberger, three. Pat.
Right. Uh, we had coming to the plan this month, we had, uh, one million, one hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and ninety five gallons. On the upfront, we put out one million, nine hundred and eighty nine thousand five hundred and seventy gallons. We had seven callouts, forty one locates. Uh, oh, three pumps. Start, start wondering here, we, uh. So we swept, uh, State Road Nine. And Lakeside Sidewalk for four July, moved the town sign to the top of the dam. One of the things we've been working on. So, uh, so we didn't send the cragging eyes, we had to be another transmission, and we've been having a lot of problems, so. Loader, one million years. Ends up being awful, there was three problems. So the first thing was a switch, which I was good at, I can test that, you know, and I do, wow, you're a lot. So, put that on, none of it working great, when it got hot, none of it worked. So we changed the fluid, moved the transmissions, and in. By calling the service guy so many times, he actually sent me the full. Service manual on that server, on that loader. So now we got all those specs on it for free, you know?
Okay.
And we found two filters, yeah, I found two filters on there that we didn't even know. So we faced that, we changed the fluid, now it's, it's really working really good as far as. Getting here and everything, um, there's a lot of same as the magnet on it, that was. Switch, it definitely gets hot, the one magnet's on it. So we didn't go to brandize, they wanted seven hundred dollars for those, and we found them online. Me and Heidi for. What, one sixty?
Yes.
Right, right in that area for those two magnets, and we don't have to cut the wire or anything.
Great.
Resply it, because their stuff is supposedly upgraded.
Your ingenuity is appreciated.
But we didn't want to be told that he didn't have a transmission, but five years ago. They told us that we need a new transmission, and it was a four dollar flip. We found, so we didn't get that, and that's why we're, been working on, so. A lot of time this month that was on and off of that. And then just, uh, little work on the grinders. Uh, changed a couple pumps, and, uh. We had to change a variable frequency drive in one of the lift stations. And five seasons still, you know, was having problems here for a while, had more callouts, exactly. And then it stopped. But one thing I didn't put in my report was, uh, four D on Lakeside Circle. So, I called to get closely sent before, I was trying to have it for a night. Uh, the plumbing in the station has a little hole inside the plumbing.
I know.
One side I cannot use.
No.
The one thing you could even, I don't think you can even put a band clamp to. Angulate it, I think it would crush pipe. Uh, so it's sort of on the glass side, but I should have a quote tomorrow.
All right.
Uh, from IPW to that station. That's pretty much.
Do you need some more food, you're going to get your part?
Uh, yeah, it was kind of cheap, I. We're, we're also changing the V I D dot to a variable frequency. Road to face and burn.
Yeah.
So we did that on eight C. Already had any callouts since we've done that.
Great.
Just because. Those vehicles, those drives are computer driven. And our power grid, it was not exactly updated, you know?
Yeah.
And so we have fluctuations in the voltage, you know, same there out all the time. Because so many problems, plus the, the new ones, when you replace them, the old ones have lasted thirty years. The new ones were lucky, three years out. We're just not holding on.
Sounds like my new wife.
Exactly, and so, so we decided to go with that road to face the murder. Cause one of them is cheaper than mine. True, it'll be. And it, we've had that now for five, six years, and that, and no problems, right? I think it would be a good investment to do, do it, those vehicles either we update those things. I think it would be a good investment to do where those vehicles either way update those stations. Like.
Been recovering by giving approval for a good year?
Yeah.
Just so he can move forward. Because he couldn't get it through tonight.
Um, vehicle mileage squad one, three hundred twenty-nine miles. Squad two, one thousand four hundred five miles. Squad three, six hundred fourteen. And squad four, one thousand one hundred and forty-two miles. Hours worked, I worked one eighty-seven and a half, and dusted one hundred sixty-seven. Being on one hundred sixty-two. Part-time, fifty hours, first twenty-four point seventy-five. Non-organic violations, uh, three for abandoned vehicles. Two for weed abatement, four for nuisances, and two for parking. Also initiated events, business checks, we did fifty-six. Warrant served or attempted one. Park security checks, one hundred twenty-three. Assisted other departments, twenty-one. And being the police and events, fourteen. Traffic violations, we wrote fourteen tickets, red warning is one hundred. Other events, we did five VIN checks. Twenty golf cart inspections, two VIN checks and one ORB inspection. Complaints, we had four animal complaints, one suspicious person. Two nine one one calls, one driving complaint, one common property. Three juvenile complaints, five suspicious vehicles, two welfare checks, one nine one one hang up. Four citizen assists, one drug complaint, one suspicious activity. Free accidents, one alarm, one suicidal complaint. Thirteen miscellaneous complaints, three disabled vehicles. Cases that were open. June third, invasion of privacy, June sixth. Theft, June seventh, OWI and OWI endangerment. Uh, June twenty-second, visual traffic violator, one sixth of it must have happened. Meetings attended, um, I attended double county mental health collaboration on June third. June ninth, this town council meeting. And June tenth, uh, director of county justice and prevention. Training attended or conducted, June fourth through the sixth, Daniel attended the. Uh, strategies and tactics of uh, police staff instructors course. June sixteenth through seventeenth. Uh, he attended Taser instructor course, and June seventeenth, my department trim, which was off duty very uh, special. Special events activities, they had Kids Day at the Faithfulness of America Center. Um, which I attended that, and June twenty-second, we did an escort. From St. Gasper's uh, to the auditory. For the Corpus Christi procession. Other notes, squad four went to Shepherd's in Auburn. And they had replaced the uh. Pan for the transmission. Had a leak. Um, and we cleaned the trouble boat lift cover and put the uh, lift on the trouble boat. Incidences, um, the total incidences in town. Our department took care of, March was two hundred and thirty-three, April one hundred and forty-three, May was two hundred and sixty-nine. And June, two hundred and twenty-seven. Outside of town. March one hundred and twenty, April was fifty-nine, and May one hundred and sixty-six. June one hundred and twenty-eight. The sheriff's department. Responded to twenty-seven incident. In town. March twenty-five and April twenty in May, and twenty-six in June. And outside of town. They had fifty incidences in March, seventy-six in April, seventy-five in May, and seventy-four in June. Graphic report. It was speed summary for Front Street. Noon speed was five miles per hour, maximum speed recorded was sixty-three miles per hour. Average value per day on Front Street is six hundred and eighty-eight. In a total value of twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-three hours from June first to June thirtieth on Front Street.
If you're in the. Now, consider a bunch of payments. We did have a question on the door, and those.
Yeah.
The sewerings were sent wrong. How many, invented six seventeen? Oh, this, is it sewerings, or, I'm seven, seven thousand, four hundred and seventy? It's um. Number two through seven? It's sewerings sent to wrong.
I forgot that. That sewerling releases.
No, we have releases, this said wrong. And then on the other page, there was. A sixty-three dollar.
Yes.
Also said wrong.
That is because they sent, oh, I know exactly what these are, so. We got our gen- our our June payment for the sewerlings, and they sent them to the general account and not to this work count. Oh, so I had to write them a check, and it's happened a few times where people will go on um, on the online pay. And they put it into the general account instead of the sewer account, so I have to. Write a check from a general account to the sewer account, yeah, that was, that's what that is.
Well, I think that you stay in.
Yep, no, absolutely.
Move the motion to the votes.
I'm in favor.
All right.
If you have anything else before we want to bring up our discussed.
Get the motion, the term?
Okay. And our next meeting will be. At six thirty P M. Thank everyone for coming.
Very nervous.